Tree, partnership between the Shetland Commission and Tree Pittsburgh. Tree Pittsburgh grows the trees themselves from sea, so they're very adaptable to our climate. My only regret is that we didn't have enough advertising that more people didn't know about it. So, we did have a very good turnout though, so thank you to Whitehall for letting us use this facility.
You're welcome.
I'm thankful for doing that.
Judy Clover?
Judy Clover, 1043 Duncan Lane. And I am here very disappointed in Mr. Soborowski for entering his problems on channel 11. I think that's not the place to do it. This is the place to do it.
So nobody can see it?
I don't care who sees it. That's not necessarily the correct way to go about your show. Put your eagle. This is the place to do it. Don't air it. We want to promote Whitehall. This is a fabulous place to live. And what you did on TV is showing a negative attitude and a negative look at our community. We've lived here years and years and... I can't tell you when we had streets flooded. Board members came to our house, Mr. Russman, the engineer, came to our house. They would talk to everybody on the street. They went through months and months to solve the issue. Don't air your negativity on television. It's very childish.
So you think what I said...
Just like the interruption to the regular... If that's typical of your behavior, I can't see why anybody would like that.
Thank you for your comment. Sharon Whitby, Mr. Mayor Speaker.
Hi, Sharon Whitby. And I just want to say...
Please give your address.
4803 Curry Road. First off, I want to thank Stone for anything that he has brought to light because I think it's important for the citizens to know what is going on. But I'm here just to express my concern for the construction going on across the street at the school. I don't think there's any sewers going on, and I'm very concerned about runoff water and flooding the housing that is across the street from the elementary school. I've lived here on Curry Road for over 40 years. I've never had a water issue. So I just want to go on record, should I have one, I will be looking to the borough and/or the school for help because I don't think what is going on over there is needed in the first place, but I'm very concerned about it.
Our engineer made a comment that I don't...
Because I don't understand why there's no sewers being put in over there.
I don't know what stage of construction that they are in currently, but I do know that there are storm sewers planned and underground detention
Right.
for stormwater there. So that was part of their improvement project.
Yes, because I went to one meeting. Nobody seemed to have known about it until it was too late. But over where they're adding the road that is going to come on Curry, there's not going to be any new sewers to have any water drainage. So I don't know where all that water is going to go. So...
It's planned for.
I hope so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Walt Tran?
Walt Tran, 343 Maxwell Drive. Any questions I raise here tonight, none of them are rhetorical. And for those who don't know what that means, it means we all expect an answer. It has to do with what used to be the Whitehall Pool, which is now a Whitehall Water Park. It's fine to have kids amenities. I don't detract from that. But don't do that for the prejudice and discrimination of adults and especially people who swim laps. Too often in this whole process, this body has given a decision-making process to someone who has no business experience, displays little business acumen, and has no day-to-day experience with what goes on at the pool. And we see the various rules that are published. And one of them is, and when this project was first presented to us, we went from six 25-meter lap lanes, which were filled just about every day, to now, according to the rendition, two 25-yard lanes with rules and restrictions. And when that was first presented to us, those lap lanes were supposed to be available for lap swimming all the time, not just 12 to 12:30 every day and 5 to 6, Monday through Friday. We go back to a common problem in this body, a lack of transparency, a lack of honesty. I've been told that the reason there's restrictions on lap lanes is that the pool manager, who I've known for many more years than anybody in this room, I know he and his dad, that the pool manager and assistant manager said, "Those lap lanes are hardly ever used." It's a lie. Either somebody's misinformed or somebody's not telling the truth. I have not missed one day before your faulty COVID restrictions. I had not missed one day at the pool. If anybody wants to know what goes on day-to-day at the pool, I am a much better source than anybody in this room, anybody who's on the payroll, anybody who's been voted in. The rules say that the rules are subject to change. Let's make some changes. Because why should my generation be discriminated against? And that's what's happening here. You people need to re... Look at those rules. Look at the format. And Jim, you guaranteed a couple of years ago that this pool would open on Memorial Day weekend. I'm holding you to that guarantee. Okay, there'll be other people speaking.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Tran.
Bob Groom, 532 Lanarko Extension. Just by show of hands, I'd like to... From the board, how many people have pool passes? Only one. So everybody else is...
They're not all... I mean, we're still selling.
Right. But how many on the board have... How many years have you had your pool pass?
Well, half the town.
Exactly. But I'm going to the point.
What's your point about it anyway, neighbor?
That you voted on the rules change. Did you not vote on that the rules would change for adult swim and things like that? You probably have never come up to the pool. I'd say if you don't have a pool pass, you ain't coming up to the pool to see actually how it worked and how it went on.
We don't live in a box. We understand what's happening there. I've talked to you many times. We know what's happening on this bird.
Well, can I... My three minutes, can I recoup a minute?
It's only for... Excuse me, sir. It's only for initial coverage. We're not in dialogue.
Okay, okay. I was just... That was a joke.
No, no. I just want to be clear. The way the rules work, it's for the initial three clubs. What's council dialogue?
I know. And I agree, Phil. We have talked. But the takeaway, adult swim, and it doesn't mean swimming laps. There's been at least 15 to 20 adults in the pool from that 12 to 12:30 that would do walking, exercising in the water, and you didn't have to worry about kids in the water at that time. Then once you have ours up, those kids swarm in. Who cares?
I gotta ask you a question. I got you a question. You put swim lanes in for adults. No kids.
But those swim lanes, if you would come up at noon...
Why do you complain? Come on up here.
No, 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 Phil. If you'd come up here at noon and see 12 people trying to swim in the swim lanes in the old pool, you ain't gonna have 12 people because you don't swim in circles. Because people swim at different paces. You can't swim in circles in lap lanes like you have designed. You can't do it.
And what you're saying to me and what I'm hearing from everybody is, we had to build a swimming pool.
I'm not complaining about the pool. I'm complaining about the adult swim that you...
I'm going to the adult swims for you. Okay, neighbor? Now, the point here is...
I don't appreciate the tone, Phil.
Well, you... I don't appreciate you saying what you're doing either because I respected you.
I have a right...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. There are 6 million... Please, let's move on to the next...
You actually treated Jerome Councilman. That's awful. Treat him like...
How you gonna solve the problem if you keep pushing him away?
You're out of order, Phil. Really. I just want to make my point.
Okay, would you please make it?
If a system's not broke, don't fix it. There was no reason to take away at least the 12 to 12:30 adult swim. No reason whatsoever. At least try it. And if it don't work, okay, now we can change it. But that's the way it's been up here. And I've been going to the pool for 14 years. I had a pool pass now. And that was my time that, okay, granted, you know, we're older now, kids are, you know, they're in buses and they play around and they splash and do things. But I think that part, and I'll piggyback off of discrimination, you're taking away... It's supposed to be a community pool with kids at mind. You want kids to come. But the adults are coming here, bringing the kids. That gives them a half hour. And I heard that the reason was that parents complained that their kids couldn't come in at 12 o'clock. I just don't understand that. It doesn't make sense to me that we would change something that because some kids couldn't come in at 12 o'clock. We're talking 30 minutes. Other pools have adult swim for an hour around our community. So I don't think it's asking for a lot, but we look at that and say, hey, can we do something? And Phil, I still respect...
Beth Lynn Iker. Thank you, everyone. I'm Beth Lynn Iker of 246 Southview Drive. I am, in fact, doing a redundant video recording and live streaming this from my own resources from the 5G. You have a 5G tower out there. You're not utilizing it. Why in the world do you need to pay thousands of dollars and perhaps wait 18 months to go ahead and wire this room? Why are we even meeting in this room? Maybe we should be meeting up in the community room where we could properly socially distance. Anyhow, the last time there was council, I was not here because I had a 102 fever temperature. It turned out that I had influenza A. I did not want to spread this to my neighbors, but I had something important to say. I was the one who pumped out the field in Snyder Park. Not you, council, because you stood up there and you promised for all the month of March that you were gonna do something about it. And after I pump out the field, all of a sudden you come up with $13,000 to give to whoever it is that Gateway Engineer has recommended this time? I am really skeptical about the pool opening in time due to everything that Councilman Stone has shared. He's a second-generation bricklayer, so if he says that the pool's not really gonna hold water, it's not really gonna hold water. So I have put forth a petition to my fellow citizens. I intended to launch it last time, but I could not attend because I had a fever of 102. So I have gone door-to-door and collected a few dozen signatures. No vote, whip, don't listen to me. Hey, if the pool does open come June 1st, I'm happy. I paid for all my family to have pool passes. But if it doesn't open in June 1st, I'm just saying, finish what you start, people. That's all. So what will it be? Will you commit to finishing Brennan Plaza and the pool and not break ground on anything else and not spend any more taxpayer money, whether it be grant money? Grant money is often taxpayer money too at the state and federal levels of our parks. I love our parks. I grew up here, and I want to see my parks for my eight-year-old child. Thank you very much.
I'd like to comment on this response. I do think that the pool poured water. However, I just didn't see it as a good idea whenever they did the shot. It was like the coldest time of the year. It was around Christmas time whenever they poured the shell of the shot. That's what I was worried about, is that it's freezing. It was extremely cold. And, you know, this is one of the contractors' very last projects. So that's what... That was my concern.
Just a couple of things to clarify if you would. Stone, just to let you know that the pool concrete or the...
Would you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
The shot creek was first applied on October 17th, and it was completed on October 28th. So temperatures ranged...
I think you're gonna be a little bit louder. Yeah, you have to speak up.
Sorry, just by the body language. Sorry. The shot creek was applied in October, started on October 17th, completed on October 28th.
So what did they cover up around Christmas time? What did they do around Christmas?
Probably walls or it could have been surge tags. There was winter provisions for all the concrete that was poured. As far as the pool will hold water, the shell has been constructed. That's what you can see from the upper road. There is still a pool liner that's gonna be installed inside of that shell.
When?
They're working on that currently, right now, trying to plan for it to get the liner installed after the concrete surrounding the pool is completed.
When?
I may defer to Kevin Nestor possibly. I don't know when that is. I don't know what the date is.
They should be poured out in about three weeks with the flat work of the concrete. After that...
Excuse me, who are you?
I am the construction manager of the pool. I am the advisor to the owner of your...
What?
The liner warranty is for 20 years. The company we're dealing with, and by the way, the company that's installing the pool itself is not going out of business. Aquapool is Aquapool. They're the pool company. Their warranty states that the liner of the pole where it's seen cannot have any debris or dust enter the liner installation during that work. The general contractor is behind on the concrete work. They will not start the liner with that concrete work completed because of dust. We've been pushing and pushing for them to do it, and one thing that they have holding over our heads is your warranty. And we can't make them give us a completed pole and then say, well, you violated the warranty. As far as the winter, I gotta agree.
Well, how do you eliminate that dust problem, that debris problem?
Sir, I'm in arguments with them every day. You don't.
I know.
You cut your grass across from the hole. Your grass blows in the hole. We've been having that argument daily with them. But they always hold out that warranty. So our best estimate right now for the concrete to be completed around the pole is about three weeks, the flat work. Now, what's in front of that and what's been holding that up also is you've got an excavator that's going out of business. They're not cooperative. They're fighting with the GC, not getting their work done. They're not coordinating. We're out there, my guys out there every day saying, okay, traffic cop work here, work there, do this, do that. Work extra hours. Work Saturdays. Work out a sequence. We've given them a sequence of plans on what to do. They just don't want to follow them. So to answer the question, you can only push somebody so far that they're gonna be in a position to hold something over you, and right now the warranty is the big thing.
Have you been the construction manager from day one on this or just somebody who's been brought in later on the deal?
When the construction started, we were the construction manager.
Did you have any input on the fact that, I mean, I as just a citizen, and I had worked in industry, I was aware of this GC's poor performance at Peters High School?
Yes.
And thus they withheld money, which led him to bankruptcy. Were as the construction manager or as Gateway Engineering or as the Borough Council, was this body aware of his poor performance at Peters and thus they withheld money?
I was not part of the bid. We came on after their award.
Okay, I appreciate the comments, but it is our council meeting. I appreciate both of your comments, but I think it is time to keep the meeting in line.
That's keeping it going, Kathy.
I would appreciate if you put my name in the paper again or on your blog or anything. It's spelled McCown, not McGowan. It's McCown, so I appreciate my name.
I will make that correction, sir. Would you care to comment as to exactly how the pool was financed, sir? And what your relationship is with West Banko, sir?
Wait, we are... We have finished. I'm sorry, Drew, but there is a timeline to our questions. And we have several of them. We only give one to speak, one person to bid on the pool finance. We only got one. Our next speaker, Greg Goga, who asked...
Greg Goga from I-29 Ranger Drive. I wanted to ask the council to at least reconsider and reevaluate two of the comments that have been brought, adult swim times as well as the lap swim time. The one beautiful thing about the pool that we have is supposed to appeal to a bunch of different groups, whether it be families, lap swimmers, aerobics, water aerobics. We provide it, and I have two young children who will benefit from the sliding boards and diving boards and the lessons. They also realize that when you go to a swimming pool, there's a function of it that is swimming. For people that like to swim, whether it be for exercise, we talk a lot because the most vocal people in this group are the lap swimmers because they're so dedicated. I've never seen a borough where people are more dedicated and also kind. And I will tell you that there are never enough lanes to swim at that pool. I don't know where the facts came up or what statistics came up that there aren't enough lap swimmers because I can tell you, I try to swim laps in my lunchtime, and I would say 40% of the time I have to go home because there are no laps to be swimming. If it weren't for Donna McCray, who has given me multiple times either shared a lane with me or allowed me to take her place, or Joyce Fargo, who must have done it. I'm gonna say the last year the pool was opened, maybe 12 times throughout the summer. And then if someone can't get in during that very short 30-minute lap swimming time, they will come back for an adult swim, which apparently will be eliminated. And you know what? You can't swim lanes there either because there are people that are coming up to rehabilitate their knees. They need lanes to swim. We have people just walking in lanes. We have no lanes to swim, people just standing there. So the fact of the matter is, I'm a working person. If the only time I have to swim laps is between noon and 12:30, then we made a great error in the design of the pool. Also, most every other community pool has at least one or two lanes open the entire time that the pool is open. Not 30 minutes, the entire time that it's open. All I'm saying is, let's just revisit this topic because what you're going to have happen if you open it up to the rest of the non-swimmers to come into that section of the pool, you're gonna have people that create their own private lanes that's basically a little party. Because I took my family to the Baldwin Pool, I took my family to the Brentwood Pool last year, and the people just take over these lap swimming lanes. It's not meant to be a bathtub. It's supposed to be a swimming time. There's plenty of room in our pool for people to do just sunbathing, cooling off. There should be room in that lap pool and adequate time throughout the day for people to come and use it for swimming either laps or other methods, if they're rehabbing their knee, et cetera.
Good evening, everybody. Charles Vargo from 5069 Carlin Drive. We've had a pool pass since we moved out of Bob's Alder Time where we had a pool for 28 years. So I'm very familiar with the pool, and my wife and I are both frequent lap swimmers. My wife is a daily lap swimmer. She's a school teacher. She uses it every day over the summer. I work, still work, and so I can't be there that noon to 12:30 all the time, but I do use it frequently. I'm just like Greg, I think I'd like to just come forward to say positively, could we revisit that notion of how that's gonna be scheduled? Because before, as has been indicated, we had multiple lanes, and most of the time they were doubled up. So we had 12 people swimming that noon to 12:30. Now with just two lanes and the possibility of doubling that up, we're only gonna get out of four. And so I think we need to really think about how we're gonna use that constructed lanes a little differently than we've historically used this. So I'd like the recreation group and committee and the council to take a look to see if we might come up with something more equitable around that. I've tried the evening swims for lap swim, and I think as Greg indicated, that evening swim frequently, people will not get out of your way because they don't understand that it's the restricted swim time. I think everybody knows that 12 to 12:30 has historically been something, whatever. But when I go up in the evening to try to do that, there's always somebody standing there. And I, you know, I like to say the guard shouldn't enforce that, that your kids have the guards at the pool. They're not always great about enforcing that and saying, you know, you need them to move out, like the people swim that are here to swim that evening swim. So now we've got dedicated lanes, which is a great resource. We need to figure out a way to make it equitable. And as Greg indicated, you know, that noon, I gotta tell you that when it's Saturday and it's a nice Saturday, I'm on Joyce. We gotta get up there about a quarter to so that we can get there and make sure we get a lane. So we do that. Now, you know, only four people are gonna be able to get those lanes at that noon to 12:30. So we need to think of some better way to do this. Maybe one way to do it is to consider the possibility of also reserving lanes throughout the day. So other places do that, and people are able to book the lanes, so that may be something we might think about.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all for your comments. I think you came up with a great phrase when you said, "We have to look at everything, and things may change or may not. It depends on how things work." I appreciate those comments. I appreciate the comments from all of you. We will now move on with the next part of our meeting, the really interesting part, the bills and pay.
While you're looking for that, Kathy, I'll just say, the pool is made out of concrete. The design's there. We can't change that. But the rules are on paper. We can change them. All right? It's a living organism, like, you know, when you sit on a body like this, if you try to help all the people that are involved, we understand. That's why the design of the pool did have those separate laps in there. I think what you're... If I'm hearing you all correctly, it's a matter of changing the rules, changing the timing, and enforcing them. That's not a hard thing to do. We're not inflexible. That's a very easy thing to take care of. We can't change concrete. We can change the rules. So give us a little credit. Now that we've heard from you, we can tweak that. Our recreation director's sitting right behind you. The pool manager will do whatever we direct him to do, and have a little faith in us, okay? You're gonna have a beautiful, beautiful state-of-the-art swimming pool. Let's think about how nice it's gonna be. It might not be perfect for everybody, but I think it's gonna be perfect for a lot of people. We can tweak the rules. We can adjust them. All right?
Well, will you?
Well, you know that this council, you know, listens to comments. Do you recall, Greg, you know, I spearheaded the comments for the pool. I got comments from you and I got comments from Greg, and I created two committees. And Jack McCray was the head, and Jack McCray, if you recall, it was a different arrangement than when Jack McCray got involved and all those comments got... It changed. The council listened. So, you know, citizens' input has always been a very important part of, you know, our planning. And, well, you can hold me to me for a... I'm still helpful, so...
But since you're addressing me personally, I'd like to respond.
Yeah, I am addressing you because you were part of my group.
Yeah, but I'd like to respond to that.
All right, go ahead.
You created those two committees.
I did.
And I was on the design group. The Jack had...
The Jack had, right.
He created a great design.
Right.
And I really felt that, and I've heard from people who were on the finance committee too, and on both committees, people feel that they were just given lip service. Because if you looked at the design that Jack put together and comments from that design group, what's up there now at the water park is nothing like those suggestions. It doesn't seem that those suggestions from the committees that you put together were duly considered.
They were considered. They were considered, but.
What the hell happened to them?
This is not the time to discuss things. We have two people, I'm sorry I missed you, but I looked down the list. I was looking for Jeff, he and I worked together many, many, many years ago. So I was staying here and I couldn't find you. So Jeff, you were next. Would you stand up and give your name and address?
Sure. Glad to, thank you. My name is Jeff Roll. I live at 5116 Ranger Drive. We've lived there for 52 years, so we're quite familiar with the Whitehall Council and the Recreation Board and other facets of the council. Mayor, you did promise us, I would concur with what Wallen mentioned, that the pool would open on Memorial Day weekend. So my reason for coming was to find, to get clarification, is it going to open on Memorial Day weekend? Well, from what I've been hearing, we're not sure. Number two, I would agree with what Greg had mentioned, that you would re-look at the issue about the lap lanes and cutting time away from seniors swimming in the pool. I don't think your intention is to do that. So please rectify that situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Now, we have one other person that signed in. Teresa, I'm sorry, give me your last name again. Lucetti, Lucetti, I, you can mispronounce my name.
That's okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Teresa Lucetti. My address is 4746 West Carlin Drive. A lot of heavy topics. This is also, everyone's on a different side. So thank you for your attention forward. I come to you also as a nurse from, at UPMC Mercy Hospital. Tonight I hope to spread awareness about organ donation. April is National Daylight Life Month, for those of you that may be aware or not aware. And I like to share my story. I've been impacted by organ donation, both personally and professionally as a nurse. In 2001, my aunt received the gift of life through her brother, a living donor of his kidney to her. In my 15 years as a trauma nurse, I have supported countless families in their decisions to continue their loved ones' legacy with the gift of life through organ donation. Western PA is fortunate to have access to Seven Transplant Centers and have the support of COR, which is our Center for Organ Recovery Education. This is my plea for everyone. There is a critical shortage of organs in the US currently, in the US. Currently, over 110,000 people are on the waiting list for a gift of organ transplant just here in the US. Every day, 17 people die waiting for their life-saving transplant. And every nine minutes, someone else is added to the waiting list. This means you could fill PNC Park and Aquashore Stadium and not have enough seats for all the people waiting for a transplant. Ninety percent of US adults support organ donation, but only 50% of Pennsylvanians register on the driver's license. We learn every day that a lot of times, this is because of a myth and misconceptions about donation. One fact is, did you know that unless you're on the ventilator when you pass away, you will never be able to donate your organs? Organs require perfusion to keep the organs viable for transplant. The biggest myth about donation is that the hospital won't save your life if they see an organ donor on your license. This is wrong. If they let you die, your organs die, and they will no longer be able to help someone else. One donor can save up to eight people through organ donation and heal up to 75 lives through tissue donation. Ask yourself, if you need a life-saving organ transplant and an organ was available, would you accept it? You are 10 times more likely to need an organ transplant than to be an organ donor. Your registration serves as a symbol of hope to patients waiting and sharing it with your family lets them know your decision. If you would like to register to be a donor, please visit COR.org/register or I have a card that you can fill out and hand back to me. Thank you for your time and consideration for this matter. I do ask first. I can put them up.
I want to get back to the comment about the lanes. West Banko is pretty much a bank, you know, it's been a long time. Yes, so West Banko is a very big bank, just like all the banks, if you're running back. So we've always discussed our financing through that. In fact, they carried the note for the fire station. That fire station note was about $2.5 million when it first started. Right now, well, we're seeing the refinancing, it's down to a million and a half. So after we got done funding or getting all the necessary information about the pool, and what it was gonna cost, and we handed out a bid, so then we had discussions with the bank. The bank came in at 2.25%. Now with banks, understanding and the solution correctly, we don't have to put out two bids for the lowest bid. We have to put out RFPs. And we did that, and we've gotten some other quotes. We even got a desk quote from FNB, who has never banked or even touched with us before. And my bad.
That's only because I said that we only have one bid.
Please shut the floor, son, please.
He's lying.
I don't lie.
Okay.
That's what I said, just to help.
Okay.
So the bank, the bank and our relationship with them, which has gone on for many years, and I'll even go back to the reason we left PNC, because PNC did not serve us adequately. And West Banko, we found, did do that, and came up and stepped up the plate. And over the years, they've worked very closely with us, even with a good rate on the fire station. But with the interest rates what they were, we were already in the process of discussing with West Banko about refinancing the fire department at lower rate. And then the pool came upon us. And with that money that is needed for the pool, $6 million, for the pool costs, we did get some requests for proposals out there, FNB and a couple others. And then FNB came in with what I call, and what the banking industry calls as a desk quote. I owe five years, another bank, and a retail banking, I'm all very familiar with that, plus my licensing as a CPA and my 40-plus years' experience as an accountant, as a CPA running businesses, okay? So the point is, we were in discussions with them. And those desk quotes came in, other things from the RFP. And FNB said, oh, we'll give it to you for 2%. But the catch there is, is to move us over to them being our primary banker. That's a big, big year to deal. New checks, new everything, you have to go. So we said no. And since we had a relationship with West Banko, I asked the borough manager, would you please call our business banking manager and see if he would match that 2% quote? And lo and behold, he did, because we have an ongoing relationship with them. It's not the lowest responsible bidder. This is not bidding. It's like professional services, like attorney, like the engineer, and even myself in circumstances as a CPA. So we ended up borrowing $7.5 million at 2%.
So now it's 2.2, just to correct.
Well, the rate's right. Yeah, thank you. So the 2.2 is gone, it's gone up because of the interest rates. That's where we got the money for the swim pool. And the swim pool cost $6 million, not $7.5 million that people have put out there. And their million and a half is the remaining of the fire station that we built on the roof. And that is the debt that we have. And what people don't understand, the reason we've been able to keep our tax dollars low, our real estate taxes in particular, and I think Jim, you said the other night, it's like 20 years we haven't touched that rate. But anyhow, our, the way our systems are designed and work, we generate enough cash flow to carry us through. Years ago, thanks to this, the Cuban government does tax anticipation, where we had to borrow money just to pay our bills in the first quarter until the tax revenues came in. But we stopped that. So we don't spend $30,000, $40,000 a year of taxpayers' dollars wasted interest. So now, we have an adequate fund balance, we have an adequate reserve, and anything above that is what we call our fund balance. Now, what we generate in the cash flows, and then real estate taxes and earned income taxes and other smaller fees that go on, that is enough to pay for the operations of public safety, public works, administration, all the parks, all this pool, and the debt service. So anything outside of those realms, unless we've worked within the confines that we're working with the finances, that's going to result in a tax dispost. I can tell you that now. So we have to be very careful in how we do things and plan things, try to get the grants that we try to get. And then we do get some of them, some of them do turn down because there are requirements attached to them that we, quite frankly, don't want, want to have happen here. So that's it in a nutshell, where the financing came from. And we're sitting at 2.2% on a borrowed $7.5 million, which is.
Is that a fixed rate?
It varies every five years based on treasury.
Thank you.
Five?
Yes.
So that's how we do finances. And building those relationships with the banks, that's how we can get those kind of rates and those kinds of services.
So what Mayor says, we negotiated the best rate that we could get.
Right.
And, you know, a lot of the tension is focused on Bob. Bob is the most, one of the most valuable councils in the world. He's a CPA. And, and when it comes to budget time, Bob is the one that guides the council. He's done a phenomenal job. And, you know, I hope your questions have been answered, Evelyn, about Bob and, you know, how we got the rate that we got.
Just so you know, my background, I lived in this community all my life. I grew up on Earl's Vale, I lived in South Passage. And in my adult life, on East Willough, and now on Moritz. So except for maybe four years I was in college, I've been in this borough my whole life. I played on these ballfields, I swam in that pool as a kid, the whole nine yards. This is my home too. And I treated it so, so I'm sorry, I'm.
Thank you both very much. I'm glad I pulled out those one-minute sign. And now we're going on to the really interesting part, the bills and payroll. Yes, I see a few heads shaking, they've been down their reasons. Mr. Ward?
Public Safety Service of Mr. Nagy.
In order.
President of the Mr. V.
In order.
Public Safety Mr. Allen.
That's in order.
Public Works Mr. Har.
That's in order.
Recreation Mr. Allen.
That's in order also.
Library Mr. Silveral.
It's in order.
Sanitary Super. Art.
It's in order.
Capital Projects Department Mr. Nagy.
In order.
I ask for permission to approve the bill list, the bill, sorry, bills from the bill listed for by April 19, 2023, from the General Fund, total of $229,341.94, from the Sanitary Superfund, total of $71,738.94, from the Capital Projects Fund, total of $75,472.2.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. I also ask for permission to approve checks and transfers ratified from the General Fund, total of $6,350.94, and from the Cable Fund, total of $50,685.19, for a grant, which will be ratified at $57,036.13.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I also ask for a motion to approve cable for a date dated 8/7/23, in amount of $156,093.19.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Now, move on to a motion to approve the minutes of the April 5th meeting.
I make a motion, we vote the even, it's probably. Second.
Any questions or corrections? The motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Um, Mayor, you are up again.
All right, Chairman of the President. Chief of my house, the Animal Control Court. The police department received 29 animal complaints with the month of March. And all of them will refer to South Hills Animal Control. It represents about 11%, 11.55% usage. I'm looking here, deer removal, we've got five in March. And our yearly total is 26. I think I reported a previous meeting. We have the worst record with regard to deer removal of any South Hills community handled by Animal Control of Mount Lebanon, based on the square miles. The number of deer taken out per square miles, far and away, is larger than any other deer, so you want to watch. Next, chief reports, several officers will be receiving letters of commendation after recent calls for service. So on March 24, 2023, officers Bradford, Meyer, and Haberjack responded to field drive for a possible vehicle fire. They soon learned that a male who was experiencing a mental health emergency had attempted to light a vehicle on fire that was parked within close proximity to a residential structure. The male fled the scene when officers arrived. However, officers were able to quickly locate the male, de-escalate the situation, and place him in custody without evidence. And on April 12, 2023, Sergeant Bowman, Officer Morrissey, Officer Meyer, and Officer Valenti responded to a Wayman Road business for an employee experiencing a possible mental health emergency. Upon arrival, the officers learned the employee fled to an unknown part of the building and his demeanor and intentions were unknown. Officers began methodical search and quickly located the employee in another part of the building. Officers talked to the employee for several minutes, were able to develop a report. It was determined the employee was dealing with family issues and no crime had occurred. The employee voluntarily agreed to leave the building and followed officers out of the building without any further issue. Next up, Earth Day, April 22. Are there going to be anybody that is, coming up at 9 o'clock on Saturday?
I'll be, I'm.
Sorry. I'll be in the mayor.
Me too.
All right. I might need some of your helpers, so. All right, well, we'll, I know, anybody else? Yeah, absolutely, open. So here's, here's the deal, for everybody to come to the Borough Building a little bit before 9, say between a quarter to 9. And there will be a Baldwin Whitehall School District class. So you get in the bus, and we'll go up to Whitehall Place, formerly known as Prospect Park. And that's where we will be met by some young people up there that shim, you know, provide services to. And, and they, they've been helping us now for years. So we will walk around Whitehall Place, picking up litter. Hannah has organized, is organizing, now this is, this is what you really want on the bus.
Here.
The bus trip, but Hannah also.
You don't want to go.
No, there will be, I'm here, but I will have, I will have a treat. And so then, we'll probably go down to Wayman Road. Again, that's part of tradition to do Wayman Road. And, and then it's over by 12, we'll be back by 12. So between 9 and 12. So if there are any good citizens out there that are concerned about the environment, we welcome you to come to the, to the Borough Building. All right, so next up, I have an Eagle Scout ceremony on Friday, oh, I'm sorry, on Sunday, for Matthew Caldwell.
Is it a rain day?
A rain day? No, no rain day. I know it's supposed to rain, but we, we go rain or shine. Sorry. It's part of Mother Earth, so get a poncho or something to, you show that you're really a hardy person, Joe. But no, this, unfortunately, there was no rain day. But I'll tell you a funny story, Marty Switzer. So one year Marty came out with his two daughters. And Marty had a ring, had an umbrella, watching his kids pick up, pick up litter. So I like Marty, so I say that, I'm loving him. So anyway, all right. Eagle Scout is Matthew Caldwell. And he has a phenomenal number of merit badges, 55. So if you know anything about Eagle Scouts, I think you can get your Eagle Scout award with about 29. And he is 55. And I haven't checked as to whether he has the record. But I, he has a significant number. He did his Eagle Scout project over at the North Zion Lutheran Church. So can I have concurrence from council to the citation of merit that I will issue for?
So moved.
Matthew Caldwell.
Well, we have to amend the agenda. And I, there is a state law that you have to have the agenda published 24 hours ahead of time, but I feel something like this that's come up for an Eagle Scout is worth watching, amending the agenda.
Make a motion there, read it. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. So the agenda's been amended. Now would you like to make your, your?
I can.
You say it.
All right. Okay, I'd like the concurrence of council to the citation of merit for Matthew Caldwell, who will be receiving his Eagle Scout.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
All right. Next, you know, we've heard a lot about the pool, and I, I gotta bring it up. And, uh, I know, uh, someone's talking, uh, in public, I'm happy to do that. Tell you my story first, so I'm sitting in John Paul Mary's, uh, barber shop, and the person, uh, who is coming after me is, uh, John Switzer. And, you know, we're talking back and forth, and John said to me, yeah, I understand the Whitehall Pool Project is in trouble. It is not in trouble, that's absolutely false, and I proceeded to, uh, tell him, uh, what I told on, uh, camera last night about the, uh, pool project. So here we have a former resident, a businessman in Whitehall, who is under the impression that our, um, pool is in trouble, and is, you know, we're not gonna have a pool in Whitehall. And I think that we should dispel that. I remember, two years ago, when there was a lot of misinformation and a lot of, um, television coverage regarding our five-year plan and the implementation of that plan, I put together, uh, uh, with council officers, a, an open letter to the people of Whitehall Borough, explaining about, you know, the five-year plan and why decisions were made, the fact that they were in the works for a long period of time, and then all of a sudden at the last minute, uh, there was misinformation about what was happening, uh, in our parks. So I would like to, uh, council's pleasure, I would, uh, like to give an open letter to the people of Whitehall, uh, regarding the pool, just, uh, explaining that, um, you know, what the current status is, and the fact that the pool is safe to come to, you know, to live out the, um, property, um, and that it will open, you know, whatever you are given at the time of the article, but I think it needs to be explained, because, you know, if I'm a, a, a parent of a couple, you know, a couple kids, what do I need to know all this information about whether, you know, the construction, uh, uh, you know, whether the, uh, excavator isn't showing up, or, you know, whatever? All I need to know is this, when is the pool gonna open, and when I jump in the water, uh, is, you know, is the water still gonna be there? That's all I need to know, right? And, uh, and so I think that we should, uh, explain to the people of Whitehall what the current status of the waters. That's, that's my opinion. Council, it's council's pleasure, we have to, happy to.
That's fine, I think we should send the letter, but can I ask you one question?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, I, hey, listen.
You said it was a political stunt.
I'm about as transparent as they're kidding.
You said it was a po, uh, okay, huh, okay. You said it was a political stunt, and you're a lawyer, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, I have nothing to gain from telling the truth and, and saying that there's, um, a lot of things that the public should know, and I think are kind of discrepancies. So like, right here, I have in my hand, um, a non-discrimination certificate from the Sarah Construction Management. Good. And it says that, you know, that we, they didn't talk with us, they didn't go back and forth, et cetera, et cetera. And it's signed at the bottom, and it all checks out. I was wondering, did Gateway sign the same thing? Because everybody except me in this room, and you, got drinks with them after they, they put the bill, and if so, if they signed this, is that considered perjury?
Wait, let me ask, let me ask, let me ask you guys, let me ask you, let me, let me start with it. You asked me, I, I said it was a political stunt, and I believe it if it was a political stunt. I think, you, this was an attack, here's what's happening.
What did he say that was incorrect?
Well, let me, I'm gonna answer, I'm gonna answer. And I like stuff, okay? I've had a lot of good relationships, good conversations, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I took an oath to do my office with fidelity, and I'm gonna do it with fidelity. Okay, so here's what I think. The only reason to say all the things that are being said is to sow distrust in the elected officials, and they've done an excellent job in handling this. They've done, you know, they hired the construction manager, they didn't have to hire a construction manager, they wanted this to be done on time and done well. The Borough Engineer's looking over it, the construction manager's over it, you know, um, and, and, and so, yeah, and the Roku's involved. The only thing in pointing all these things out is to sow distrust so that your friends can be elected. And I know, you went down to the Cannon Gate and, and Dane Bridge with your three friends and talked about the pool, it's obvious, the benefit that you're deriving is, if you sow distrust in the elected officials, then, then the people won't vote for the elected officials, and they'll vote for somebody else. And you're pushing three people to, to form a majority with you after the November, after the November election.
That's, I'm not, I'm not just friends with just the Republicans, I'm friends with most of the Democrats running as well.
I know, you're friends with Marty.
I'm friends with Marty? Okay. I, I'm gonna say you are.
I am friends with Marty.
Okay. You didn't answer, what did he say that was incorrect? Yeah, and in the first.
Okay, alright, okay, alright, here, here, I'll, okay, I have it, I have it, okay, well, let's go.
One minute.
Okay, uh, um, a long, first of all, it said in, in a post that you made, is that the, uh, believe, you said the contractor filed for bankruptcy, contractor did not file for bankruptcy.
They didn't.
Ask her, chapter eleven, they crazy, her.
I don't know what happened. No, that, what it was is, you know, with, uh, three credit, what I'm saying, with three, what, by, three or more credits, we signed up and involved a bankruptcy petition. They ended up bankruptcy, we're doing subsequent, some way it was dismissed.
Okay, so they're not in bankruptcy now? Right?
Not at all.
So, okay, so they're not, it was dismissed, so they're not in bankruptcy. So when you say that a contractor.
They're going out of business, aren't they?
File for bankruptcy, and they're not in bankruptcy, that's, that's false.
Well, you can file.
Also.
What? You can file, though. It's not a false statement.
Huh?
It's like being arrested, but you don't get convicted.
Okay, alright.
Are you gonna, they gonna?
Alright, but it gives, but what it does is, it gives the impression that they're in bankruptcy right now, and they're not.
I didn't get that from that. I didn't get that from that.
Well.
Can I, can I, can I ask something, like?
Well, wait, 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 let me finish, let me finish. Um, alright. Another alarming situation, okay, these are the words that you used, another alarming situation. Whitehall residents get scared here about the pool that took place with the shot creek of the pool, which is part of the pool that actually holds water, did not test the proper PSI, and that is totally untrue, and it's intended to create a scary situation for residents who are thinking of coming to the pool. Hey, would you bring your kids if you read an alarming situation that took place? Why should I get a pool pass? Okay, so it did, it, so what happens is this, the, the specs, I believe, were forty-five-hundred PSI per square inch. The pool was designed for, uh, four thousand PSI. The actual PSI was forty-two, twenty, which is above what the pool was designed for.
What did we contract?
This is a false, false statement.
I mean, what did we pay for? Did we pay for forty-five?
When you say, what do we pay?
Yeah, 'cause you have, each, each, each PSI goes up.
All I, all I can, all I can answer is this, it was designed a certain way, okay? It was designed higher than the specs, right? And, and it came in higher than the specs. So the issue of what we paid for, what does the mother of two kids, three kids, you know, who are, who are buying pool passes, why do they need to know that it's alarming that, that that occurred? May, maybe, maybe you're right, that's a totally different issue. This is, uh, what I'm addressing is John Switzer having the opinion that the, the pool is, you know, project is, is going south, and I say, we need to, uh, address that. And so this is false information, this is false information, and it doesn't, this information is designed to discredit the Whitehall elected officials to set up the situation in which other people will be, uh, elected. It's not set up to inform, because we're deciding, should I buy a pool pass or not? Can you get me to that? Should I design a pool, uh, decide to purchase a pool pass or not? Why do I need to know all these alarming things? I would be discouraged from buying a pool pass, and, you know, I mean, we have a fiduciary duty to, to our residents, to, you know, to tell them, you know, the truth and encourage them to participate in the services that we, that we have. But I guarantee you, if, if, um, there are probably a number of people who read alarming situation and decided, hey, maybe I'll hold off and not, not get a pool pass. So that's what I think. Alright, fair enough.
You're sending a letter out, do you think it'd be, I've been proposing this for probably almost two years now about this, the cameras and live streaming, and I had donations in place to do that, do you think that would be beneficial so that the whole community could know what's going on, and then situations like this don't happen?
Alright, you, alright, well, uh, let me, well, let me, he asked a question, so you can.
Let the video shoot.
Well, no, I, 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 the question was addressed to me. Alright, look, I, there are, I, I understand the value of having live streaming.
Especially when it's free to the borough, I'd be, I would say, hey, why?
But the suggestion, the suggestion that we need live streaming in order to, uh, inform the public, I would dispute. And the reason why I say that, you know, I got a call from somebody who, uh, you know, one of my, I, I have dialogues, a number of, uh, people that are concerned about deer in the borough, and, uh, and, you know, very much, uh, animal rights, uh, activists, and I, and I have, you know, conversations with them, and I had someone call me up and say, hey, I read the minutes, what's going on with this thing? You can get information from the minutes, we, you know, we have, uh, Alyssa just did design a new web, you know, a new website, we have Courtney and, and Hannah posting all the time. Do we need, you know, live streaming, you know, in, in order for residents?
Yes, yes, yes!
Here's this, it's a bad idea whenever I.
I'm not, I'm not saying.
Everybody gives every excuse up and down. This is Gateway Engineers Construction Management Service, their idea, and it was a brilliant idea whenever they brought it up. We are planning to assist the borough with developing a state-of-the-art communication plan. We are proposing to install work zone cameras onsite to keep stakeholders informed of the progress of work. The four G wireless camera can provide time-lapse video that can be interfaced with borough website if council desires. Residents can log in through the borough's website and watch the construction in real time, okay? They gave us this January of twenty-twenty-two. How come we could, we could figure that out then, but we can't figure it out whenever? I propose it, and I give, I donate whatever you, whatever it takes. So I.
If, if I may, there's a backstory on the internet. Uh, last year or two, the chief has been going through a, a rebuilding for his, uh, command center downstairs, we spent almost two hundred thousand dollars upgrading our, our, our dispatch center. So in that whole process, we realized this building was, the way it was built is all concrete walls, not, not wooden walls, and the police station was added. But from them building out the police dispatch center, we realized that our internet access to this building was inadequate, it was an old DSL, it wasn't even copper lines, it was a DSL line. So some of you guys are nodding your head, you understand what I'm talking about. So, and I had, I had the opportunity to do my own place of work, which is right down the street on fifty-one in Brentwood, where my office is, we switched from a, a cable line to a, a fiber line. So we got in touch from that experience, I, I passed it on to Courtney, and got in touch with Comcast, who we have relationships and, and representatives of, because they're in our community. So they go through the process, they've identified a, a fiber line head that they can attach into, and it's down the road, and they have put together all their engineering, and typically they do cover all the costs, as long as we guarantee we'll sign up so that they can get their payments back. So that has happened. Their estimated time of Comcast is anywhere from twelve to eighteen months.
In the meantime, though.
Can I finish my story?
There's a floor.
So, so with the eighteen months, he says, that's not acceptable, but we did enter a contract with them, and it's now down to twelve months if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, they are planning to start the external construction on fiber line, uh, this fall, August.
Alright, so, okay, so that's one step. Now, since we have the adequate communication lines here within the building, not the cell tower that doesn't belong to us, that belongs to T-Mobile.
But why do we correct rent? Want rent from them?
No, they pay us.
That's what I said.
They owe. So, so now, so once we get an adequate communication line in here and get it just permitted through the building, you don't have to worry about the library, the library's on its own system, it's called the EIN network, it's all countywide, that's a different system where it admin and down, it's all the same. But because of the concern of public safety, of course, this is, that takes priority, we're gonna get that stuff fixed. Once we get the infrastructure's built back into this building to do that, through these concrete walls, and wired up and put the adequate, some of them, you'll see, and I call them spiders, they sit on the ceiling with all the antennas on them, that's all your wifi and hotspots. So once we get that, and then the committee has already talked about with the Borough Manager to do investigation, because we're gonna do something, we're gonna do it professionally and do it right the first time, so we spend the right amount of dollars. And no offense, I understand what these people are trying to do, but this is not professional. You know, we have professional engineers.
Sir, there have been people standing out in the hallway trying to get in here because this square footage is not adequate. Let's move it upstairs.
So is this, that, that's what the story is about the infrastructure and the cameras. And by all means, so if you have, if you have people that wanna donate money, uh, we've done that before, Kathy's gotten donations put up.
I said it, I made a motion, you guys declined it.
Stop, 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 they'll be, yeah.
No, no, that wasn't a motion, it's, you said you knew somebody that would do it. We can't go that direction. We have to use qualified, and in qualified certified people, Comcast has those people, not somebody that you know that has a drill and some wire.
You never asked, who was it?
We can't take the risk of anybody other than a professional association doing this because how many people feel secure? What we're talking about right now, somebody's listening to it in California, and we cannot take the chance of some AERZOX company out there installing something at the behest of one councilman, that could have any number of things go wrong with it. Uh, documentation could be leaked, personnel member, uh, personnel discussions could be leaked, when we have executive session, we sometimes discuss personnel issues that are totally, totally private. Those type of things, we have to make sure that our, our communications lines are secure. That's why we'd not take Stoneup on his offer to have some friend of his install, uh, install cable in here. We're gonna do it the right way, as we always do, with the contractors that we use, and that everybody has faith in. So please understand that.
Well, and then there's.
There's also wifi hotspots from the, the library we could use to.
That's not, that's not a copyrighted network, that's their own private EIN network that's run by the library systems.
No, I'm not talking about the EIN network, I'm talking about the hotspots residents could pay for, um.
Yeah, I carry a hotspot for when I go in.
So we can take a hotspot here.
Well, that's not preferred, that's not the right way to do it.
You almost make it sound, Stone, like we're trying to hide something. The meetings are, we usually get three or four people at our piccies. And anybody's welcome to come, anybody's welcome to, to read the minutes. Anybody can come here, any meeting, we welcome people, we beg people to come. We're not hiding anything, this is an open forum, we're, we're council. We, we have years of, of unblemished records and not being tarnished by this nonsense during silly season that our neighboring communities are known for. This is Whitehall. In fact, we used to have, we used to have, when, when the South Hills Record had, had a reporter every week, he said, you know what they got like about Whitehall? I can't tell who's a Republican and who's a Democrat. And you know what? You shouldn't be able to, because at this level, we're not talking about gun control and abortion, we want the pool to have water, we want the sewers to run, we want the best public works group in the world to keep our streets clean, the best goddamn police department in, in the city to do what they do. That's what we want, and that's what the residents have got. Alright, we don't want, we, i- i- until just recently, for some reason, we were never in the news for stuff like this. I don't know how that happened, I've been on councils, I started in nineteen ninety-six, this is the first time it's ever happened. Nobody has anything to hide here, there are people that are here tonight that come to the meetings every week, and we usually get four or five people, if we were doing something wrong, wouldn't this room be filled all the time?
My offer's still standing, but to do it however you guys.
If you donate the money.
At this point, no.
No, I'm saying, I'm gonna talk, right?
At this, no, at this point, I think we, we've carried on to tomorrow night's discussion. Tomorrow night, there's a meet the candidates night, please come.
This is not about that, this is not about that, and I'm gonna interrupt you, Madam President.
Please.
For the simplest reason is, listen to what we task you. How many of you know me? Many, right? I've never lied to any of you at all. I've served the church well. I take communes, I do those things. Why would you think I would lie to you, Sandy, but why do you think they would lie to you? You have one serious problem, it's called election time.
You have a group of people, and whether you know it or not, you have a group of people sitting out there on both ends with one leader. And they're portioning this issue. He's one of them. Have you ever had this problem since you've ever been here? No. You have people who wanna come here and be on activities, who come from another state, and they find out on TV that what's happening, Whitehall is the best, and they'll tell you that on their computers. Move there. That's where it's safer. In twenty-eight years, we gave our lives, our souls, our lives to protect everybody, not us. For the lousy two bucks we get to spend more, we spent five more for ourselves, and, and we're in terror. I destroyed my lungs because of the farm company, being a farmer for fifty-three years. All we do is ask anybody to come on the council, know what you're gonna do because you should understand how this all works. There isn't any council out of this borough that is as good as this borough. None. And I can guarantee you, you find and talk to anybody. The biggest problem we have is that young man over here in the corner. He comes in with a hate streak for everybody.
You're the one that threatened me. I never threatened you.
I never threatened you in my life.
And nobody took my back whenever you threatened me.
Oh, there's somebody lying again. If I ever threatened anybody in my life.
Okay, I think it's time to, to continue with business of Whitehall Borough and want to discuss with candidates tomorrow night, the night to, to show up. And we'll now move on to, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm cutting you off.
I, I understand.
Our end to the air, Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I do have a few actuaries to review with you this evening. Under item two in the report, uh, in April thirteen, we did receive a final CCTV video for the 2021 post-construction repairs. So that contract is ready to be closed now. We have reviewed the application number ten of file. So the recommended motion is to approve pay application ten and final in the amount of thirty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and two cents for the 2022 Whitehall Borough sanitary sewer excavation repair contract to Roto-Rooter Service Company.
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Under, um, the 2022 CCTV inspection contract, work has continued. And Roto-Rooter has submitted a pay application number three. It is in order, and the recommended motion is to approve pay application number three in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay, seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Just to let, um, council know, um, we are going to have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow for the, um, for the borough trench drain, or the public work facility.
I have an inquiry.
That's for compliance due to the concerns of trench. Thank you.
And under, um, item thirteen, the pre-construction, certainly can see or notice the, the ongoing work, the flat work that is going on. Kevin Destor is here from Masero. If you have any questions for him. But, um, we did receive a pay application number twelve from, uh, Melo Construction Company. Uh, we reviewed that and recommend payment contingent upon receiving the certified payrolls. The recommended motion is to approve pay application twelve in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and seven cents for the Whitehall Pool Improvement Contract Number One, General Instruction to Melo Construction Company.
I'll make that motion.
You said that the sub continues. Sorry, there was a lower part of the motion.
It's contingent upon receiving the required number of files.
So moved.
Sir, any questions? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Likewise, Merritt Electrical Group submitted their pay, their eleven pay application request. We reviewed it. The recommended motion is to approve pay application eleven in the amount of eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents for the Whitehall Pool Improvement Contract Number Two, Electrical Construction. The Merritt Electrical Group Incorporated contingent upon receiving required documentation.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Um, under item fifteen, page five, we received three bids at the public bid opening for the 2023 pavement maintenance program on April twelve. Uh, we have attached a bid tabulation to that report. The bids included a base bid and two alternate bids. Due to the continual rise in asphalt costs, Par Drive was removed from the base bid and listed as an alternate one by amendment. Rain Tree Drive was also listed as an add-on. Uh, Millie and Millie and Son Incorporated was the lowest pre-qualified responsible bidder for the base bid and any combination of add-on or bids. The base bid amount was four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and two cents.
I'm listening.
So are you just aborting, uh, so the recommended motion is to abort the base bid for the 2023 pavement maintenance program in the amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and those cents to Millie and Millie.
Before we correct our motions, do you, you have a recommendation on the alternative?
Well, the, um, the low bid price for, uh, Par Drive bid was fifty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and those cents. And then for, uh, the Rain Tree Drive, it was a hundred and one thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars here. But about that, we're staying with that.
Um, question.
Correct. But as is typical with the pavement maintenance program.
Can we talk about the other thing?
Sorry. Sorry, I'll tell you, need a beer. As typical with, uh, pavement maintenance programs, there are items in there that we include, um, such as, um, concrete curb or on-suit materials that may be encountered. And it's all allowance. Some years, like last year, we didn't use any of the on-suitable, so there's a savings there. So we anticipate to come in under budget with the base bid.
Then I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item sixteen, um, we, uh, receive all of the final closeout documents from independent enterprises for the Doverdale Phase Two Storm Sewer Extension Project. So the recommended motion is to approve pay application number three and final in the amount of ten thousand, five dollars for the Doverdale Phase Two Storm Sewer Extension to Independent Enterprises Incorporated.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And then just the final item, the gag, is item twenty-one, uh, the Schneider Park. Just to let council know that, um, um, the contractor handling the miscellaneous grading as well as the drainage will be starting tomorrow.
I noticed the pieces we put went up there.
Just deliver it to them.
As I came past.
That's all I have. If there's any questions.
Any questions?
What about the, uh, the park stuff?
Uh, weekend, I provided that phasing plan for Overlook Park, um, to you with some suggestions on how we should approach it. So I would assume that you're, what, especially-
Maybe you're gonna go through this and make a little revision?
Um, we did not have a chance to do that yet.
That's what happened. You're gonna do that.
Yes, we will do that. For those of you who weren't here at the last meeting, the bids for the Overlook Park, I can see someone back there smiling. She knows they came in, what?
Almost a million dollars.
Almost a million dollars over what we had expected to lead.
We, we wanted-
We refused that bid and decided maybe we have to do some rethinking of what we were gonna do in that part. There are parts of the park that must be changed. We can't open the park the way it is and we can't affect. But maybe we can cut it down some. So that's what, what we were talking about here. But the park committee did not have a chance to, to really look at that yet. We will, people, the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, um, about to move on then. So our manager reports.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Uh, the first item on my report is in regards to the SHAPE-CALL SALT contract. Um, they have done the process of determining whether Cardo will extend its contract to the first option year. That process started with each individual community writing and directly asking for that extension. So I ask that council authorize myself to send that letter.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We really have to talk about salt.
Unfortunately, we do. Uh, the next item on my report is in regards to the Grove Grant, um, for the M42. Uh, now this is a project on the streets-run sewer shed project being spearheaded by Golden Borough. They applied for an opportunity to grow a grant. If you recall, we were partying to that grant. Um, they're asking for an MOU, um, and ready for signature. Uh, just for reference, this project is a comprehensive rehabilitation of that sanitary sewer spanning five municipalities. So I ask that council authorize the proper borough officials to sign that MOU.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. I, any comments? I believe there was an article in the In Magazine about, about this project. One of the magazines. Anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Uh, next up on my, uh, excuse me, on my report is, uh, Get Solar. So I recently just got in a Zoom, uh, conference with Connect at Pitt, specifically Gisbia, with the PA Solar Center about, um, their Get Solar Connect program. This program helps member municipalities throughout the entire procurement process of looking at solar energy. Um, it's a four-step process where they first complete a feasibility study. Second, they solicited RFPs. Third, they would even compare those RFPs. And before they assist municipalities in developing a financial strategy to implement a solar project if they so desire. Um, there is, um, no cost to participate in this process, but I ask that council authorize me to apply, um, for the 2023 Get Solar Connect Program.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please do.
Uh, next on my report is the Pool Construction Management Services. The extended agreement, um, that council approved last month only goes through the end of this month. So I ask that, uh, council authorize extending that contract, contract to through May, May of 2023, using the establishment on complete.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions?
All in favor? How much is the monthly fee again?
It's twenty thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents.
And will the borough be paying for that, or will, will that be, who's gonna be paying?
The borough.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to the reports.
I just feel it, there, I feel it. Sorry. Apologies. These came up earlier this week. Um, so I recently had the chance to speak to a representative from Governor Shapiro's office, um, the local office in the metro's here. Um, and he's asking how to give you assistance to Whitehall Borough. So, uh, just so the council knows, I did discuss, you know, we're always looking for grant opportunities for our recreation needs. I did bring his attention the issue of maintenance of storm sewers along state roadways. Um, and then we did discuss the challenges facing volunteer fire companies. They already let our fire company know that if there are any grants they are applying for at this stage level, um, to let me know. And I can forward that information on to, um, Mr. Joyce if he can elevate those to the appropriate agency on their behalf. And then I spent Monday morning, um, at a SHAPE-CALL meeting, reviewing the final draft of the bid specifications for the upcoming refuse and recycling bid. Um, as we've previously discussed, the biggest drivers here are automation and volume control. Uh, even going with automation, which is the presumption at this point, the bid value is seeing price increases of twenty to forty percent. So there appears there are at least three petters, possibly up to five. Um, and Mr. Borowski is actively seeking as many as he can in their price area to care. So the tentative bid schedule, um, right now was for a bid opening on Monday, June fifth. So I'm pretty sure people are aware.
Well, you want with the, um, concerns by the borough managers regarding the recycling or, uh, automated bidding? Is there any concerns?
About moving to automation?
Or whatever. I mean, we had one thing discussion at the SHAPE-CALL meeting. Wanted if there was much discussion with the borough managers.
Not unless automation, um, presumption is that it's gonna be cheaper. That's what the industry is pushing, but even cheaper than in or still pricing for a contract, presumably.
How about the EXG, take off, is that the same problem?
Uh, so there's a lot still to deal with. There is a meeting, a major meeting with the Miss Howley's and representatives from the, um, individual companies or people there. Where, this is normally where after discussions, a vendor comes out with a contract and announces these items as far as extra toters, extra cost. All of that will be hashed out there, and that's on Monday night. You're welcome. And then last on my list, um, myself, a representative of the library, colorworks, uh, we met with Deputy Gable and Officer Smith yesterday morning to discuss a building-wide security evacuation plan, um, which we currently do not have, specifically in regards to an active shooter, mental health crisis, some type of disturbance that happens here at the municipal complex. Officer Smith is willing to train the staff, admin, and the library. However, this type of professional development require the offices to close for a few hours. Miss Kelly is confident the library board will approve a tenure for the library staff. Is there any objection from council? If we're able to schedule this, you know, based on Robby's, uh, schedule, that you could close the office with advance notice to the public on our Facebook website and flyer in the bill?
Sure.
Sure, there is an objection. Sure, there's-
No, there's not. Do you need a motion or just give it?
I, I just would like if there's an objection to, to doing it, we are gonna work with Officer Smith's schedule to see when we can reschedule it. Um, and then we're possibly gonna look at doing super-stated CPR training in the same day to be as, least disruptive to the public as possible.
If you need to get, uh, Chief Ward, whoever works in the building.
Yes. Not all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?